All right, I have thumbs up. Ms. Harden, if you would please call the roll for the board and then we will...
Call me, your... Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman H...
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Sishtro.
Here.
Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
Everyone is in attendance, thank you. At this point, we'll call the meeting to order. This is going to be our recess meeting for August 18th. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invitation from Alderman Vaughn, and a moment of silence.
........................... Justice for...
Alderman Vaughn, please.
That was great. God of creation, to give our life, to follow our Lord Jesus Christ, and then, Father God, as the pure and made servant, we commit for you again tonight, Father God. To give thanks and praises and glory and honor to you, first of all, for allowing your angels to watch over us all day long today. And thank you for your Holy Spirit that appointed us to this disposition that you have put us all in, and then your Holy Spirit directed us back to your Father God, to serve the peoples of Starkville, who just want to say thank you. We thank you for what you allowed us to achieve this before, all three years, Father God, and thank you for all the infrastructure and all things that are going on around us. We thank you. But we know that you're the God that said, "You won't put no more than we can bear." We ask you now that you will please forgive us of all our sins, and now that you were Director Mayor, the Vice Mayor of the Board, and direct all our hearts, Father God, that we will look at the heart of every situation, we will look at the heart of every man, instead of looking at the person. Let us look at the heart, the way you look at our heart. And Father, we just thank you. We glorify you, we magnify your holy name, that every decision that we make, Father God, it will glorify you. And Father, we just thank you for being our God, and we your servant, being our Father, we your children. We thank you for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man, and in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Everyone, we appreciate you all being here this evening. Our first order of business will be approval of an official agenda with consented items, and I will, because we do have someone attending telephonically, or actually on video, I assume, we will go down the roll of each individual to see who might have something to say about any particular item, so that everyone gets a chance to speak. So, first and foremost, from a consent item, anything on the agenda or consented items? Alderman Vaughn, anything that you'd like to change?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Sishtro? Alderman Carver? All right, no changes to the agenda or the consented items, in which case we need a motion for approval of the same.
Please, please, Mayor.
I have a motion from Alderman Little to approve the official agenda with the consented items. Do I have a second?
No.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Sishtro?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, thank you all, it is unanimous, and I will lead the consented items. First, it's consideration of amendments of the July 21, 2020 meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen in the City of Starkville. Consideration of the amendments of the July 30, 2020 work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen in the City of Starkville. Under Mayor's Business, consideration of removing the COVID-19 hiring freeze and resumption of advertising and replacement of personnel. Mayor's Business also, consideration of the approval of a contract of Mississippi State University for an overhead street lighting project for South Lafayette Street. Under Department Business, planning, consideration of an agreement with Pace Credit Card Processing with the MyGov software. B, consideration of calling for two public hearings to amend several sections of the Unified Development Code as part of a comprehensive update. Under Engineering, we have consideration of authorizing the Mayor to approve the transportation-related services IPO with Timely Horn in accordance with the General Services Contract. Under Finance Administration, acceptance of the July 2020 financial statement. Under Fire Department, request permission to accept $170,000 assistance to firefighters' grant with a city match of $15,054.55 to be used to provide exhaust removal systems for each of the fire stations, and payment of $7,359.31 to JCMC Consulting for Project and Grant Administration. Under Human Resources, request authorization to hire Jesse Marsh, Megan Alcoin, and Terry Clay Thompson as entry-level firefighters, and to hire Savannah Sanchez as a part-time firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department, and to retain the candidates from the selection process held on August 18, 2020, for the consideration to fill any additional vacant positions in the Starkville Fire Department, due to retirements, resignation, or termination to the Starkville Fire Department within any period of 90 days. Request authorization to hire Keon Clanton and Jacoba Evans as maintenance workers for the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Re: Request Authorization to hire John Trainum as a part-time grounds maintenance worker, and Chandler Bowman as a part-time aircraft lineman for the Airport Department. Under Police Department, request approval to declare the following: 10 police vehicles as surplus and authorization to sell on GovDeals.com. Number 1, a 2010 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FABT7BV1AX117326. A 2008 white police Ford Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71V78X122432. A 2007 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71W97X151907. A 2010 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FABT7BVAAX117332. A 2004 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71W54X169607. 2004 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71W84X169598. A 2007 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71W57X151905. A 2007 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71W67X151900. 2007 black police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71W67X151895. And last but not least, a 2004 white police Ford Crown Victoria, VIN number 2FAST71WX4X169599. Y'all should be proud of me for making this my post. All right, and that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. All right, the next item up is announcements and comments, and first, Mayor's comments, and I'm going to continue to beat the census drum. For those of you who have not filled out the census, please do so. The month of August is shortly slipping away, the month of September is the last month in which we are able to do that, so please, it is an easy five-minute process, if you would please, census.gov, and you can have it done in no time, and it matters, certainly matters to us in Mississippi for the funding that we get to support libraries and schools and any number of other items that benefit from federal dollars. So, if you would please, that would be a wonderful thing. I don't have anything else, to my knowledge, to speak to. Alderman Vaughn, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, piggyback on what the mayor said about the census, but very important that we get this through us out, and quit abusing the people that are coming around, trying to help you to do something for your state, this is your state. If you don't feel these census out, they mean less harm coming into your state, into the hospitals and all. It's very important that we do that. It don't abuse the people that are coming around, asking you about the census. Thank you.
Thank you, I hadn't heard that that was happening.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Yes, Alderman Vaughn.
All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Sishtro?
I'm gonna take what Alderman Vaughn said and add to it that this is a once-every-10-year thing that happens with the census, and if we get it wrong this year, we pay for it for the next 10 years. So, it's not like it comes back in a year or so, and we get to get those monies back. It also impacts our representation in Congress. While we may not slip this year, I remember when we lost a representative because of our census. So, very important, and yeah, being kind to people never hurts, you're right, Alderman Vaughn.
Thank you. Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. And I neglected, and I should have been very clear, to welcome the students back. I realize there are no students necessarily in the audience, but in case they ever tune in, we are delighted to have them back in town. We will all work to stay safe, so we appreciate what they do to make the community special, and also look forward to them sitting in and working with us on staying safe, with masking and washing hands and staying distant. So, those are challenges, but we will work to make that happen. Citizens' Comments, this is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak to the board. You have three minutes, any topic is fine, and we don't generally respond back and forth, which is not a give-and-take, but it is certainly an opportunity for us to hear the things that are on your mind. So, Mr. Turner, happy to see you.
... We have a few things that is kind of scary to people. The town, we have a timeout sign that's still in the streets, but you make it you tell it to be the town's anger. The test kicking off. Also, at Crowe Way, Walmart, timeout plan, people miss the speed of people in the... All people don't drive a plane. Also, we have speeding on the U.S. Street, and the street that goes through by the house, we have kids out and out, and the people that are speeding, we're not there, if you don't care, hit a child, and that would be your speed, unless you're out. Also, we have the code next to, we've been saying thinking that the governor and the GDC guys, we should have more people in here, and we have mad, and the city council think about, the U.S. Attorney, that.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to take advantage of citizens' comments? Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Alderman, I appreciate you having the opportunity to be here. I've been reading the paper that it can be discussed tonight or not.
Would you identify yourself, just for the record? Thank you.
I know everybody up here.
Just for the record?
I noticed in the newspaper, there's a consideration, whether it starts tonight or not, increasing millage by two, and I have concerns with that. My concerns are that our students left us in March, they're back with us now. Sales, revenue, taxes increased from June of this year from June of last year, and there's varying reasons why that is. We have so many people, it's not working, and we're talking about increasing millage? Construction is up here? I'm saying, my opinion is, if you think about it, you need to table it for a while, and let's see what happens over the next four or five months, and then if we need to do something at that point in time, yes, but to move too quickly on this, I think, is not good for our community. I love Starkville, my wife, beauty, we love this community, but I don't think this is the time or the place to talk about increasing millage. We can put some projects on back burner for a while, and then look at it in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close citizens' comments. We have no public appearances tonight. We have a public hearing, and this is the public hearing, consideration for 21-19-11 to determine whether the property located at 307 West Main, with a parcel number 1180... 118000338.00, is amended to the Public Health, Safety, and Welfare community. If you recall, at the last board meeting, we had four, I believe, five properties, actually, and four of them have been mediated, and so this is the only remaining property that needs to be dealt with this evening. And I will open it as a public hearing first, and then we will have a discussion amongst ourselves. Anyone wishing to comment on this piece of property, either in favor or against, now would be the time. It's located at 307 West Main Street. Anyone? Anyone? Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and any board member, I will start. Alderman Vaughn, do you have anything, this has been your reward, right?
Ma'am, this is one of the projects that's, that we can do something about every year. We're teeing it, we just got to go back every year and do these same properties over and over and over. Do we have another process that we can take, and instead of bringing this back, going through this, and that we just take action and go ahead and take care of these properties? Because some of them, sit over the summer, almost be gone, and still have to fix some of them, and I just wonder, is there another way that we can do this, instead of doing a little bit of doing?
Well, this process in particular, and I'll let Mr. Latimer speak to this, with this process in particular, we have had trouble getting up with these people and finally determining that they are, I believe, in bankruptcy or just will not respond to us, and so it has taken longer than it should have. Part of that was due to code enforcement being out, COVID, et cetera, et cetera, but I believe what we can do is, once we mow this, which we will do as soon as the board authorizes that, we will then put lien against this property and file at the courthouse, and then from there, I'll let Mr. Latimer deal with exactly what it is that happens after that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And Alderman Vaughn, so the statute allows the city to go back in and clean up as many times as they need to within a calendar year. So, if the board were to find this property amended to the Health, Public, Welfare, and Safety tonight, the city could mow it tomorrow, and then the city could mow it how many ever times it needs to, up until August 18 of 2021. So, that would get you through next summer, at least, but the statute just doesn't let you go more than a year.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Beatty? All right, thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
Okay, do I have a motion? I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Little?
Yea.
Alderman Sishtro?
Yea.
All right, thank you all, it is unanimous, and I will be getting with folks tomorrow to get this mowed, so we will get this taken care of, and this, Minnie Rogers will be able to relax a little bit with her front yard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right, the next item on the agenda is our first public hearing that we had Mr. Miller speak about, and this is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2020/2021 budget and tax millage for the City of Starkville. I will open it as a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak about it now would be another opportunity, other than under citizens' comments, so if anyone wishes to speak about it, now would be the opportunity. Anyone?
Please, how about my name? The code next to, and then it's all the, and all the, all the way. And you gotta be real careful. You mark it by, let it go a walk, because we don't want to, we put out there, we start. Y'all are coming down, in that case, it's a toll. You have to try and push what? But it gives you to try to keep out here, a little walk, to August 19. There's people to understand that why the, it didn't, we, as we take y'all in this together, we are trying to get to...
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close it as a public hearing, and I will speak immediately, or not immediately, I'll speak first about it, and then I will defer to our Budget Chair, and then we'll go to our, not immediately, I'll speak first about it, and then I will defer to our Budget Chair, and then we'll go to our folks. One of the things that I would like to speak to is what Mr. Miller said, which was that, you know, we look at it for a few months, and then we do something. Well, unfortunately, in a budget year for raising millage, that's not a luxury that the city has. We only have this timeframe in which to adopt a new budget, and that budget that we adopt is going to be all that we get for an entire year, and so we don't have the luxury of watching our revenues, dive, or whatever it does, and then responding to it. The only option we have is to determine what our millage needs to be now to carry us through this next year, under the scenario with which we're dealing. And so, I wish we had a second bite at the apple, good year, so that we could adjust, but that really is not a possibility. So, in speaking of that, I will now, Alderman Sishtro, if you would like to take it from here?
Sure. We had our typical pre-meeting work session last Friday, I think that that is on line. If anybody wants to go back and look at that, where we got down into the weeds a little bit more about our budget, an actual detailed budget is available in our e-packet, if you're interested in looking at that. In putting together this year's budgets, the thing we were most focused on, given the amount of uncertainty, the things that we are finding ourselves trying to predict that we've never had to deal with before, was to maintain as much flexibility as we possibly could, as we put the budget together. The big drivers in the budget this year are the effect of the COVID-19 pandemic on our sales tax. We've seen it have a negative impact, we've seen months where it hasn't impacted us too much, one way or the other. We don't know what that's gonna look like over the course of the year. We thought as much expert opinion as we could, in terms of what the future might look like, and we have budgeted accordingly. That was the big driver. Another is putting our budget back from our mid-year budget cuts, we restored those budget cuts, particularly with personnel. We have the Build a Grant, which is our new grant that's gonna allow us to revitalize Highway 182. We have our match built into the budget, and we have built in the first year's payments for new body cams for the Starkville Police Department. Those are really the only major changes from last year's budget. As the Mayor said, millage is something we get one bite at the apple of, we do it during this budget process, we have to adopt it by a date certain, and then we don't get to address it again until the next year. We have always, always, thought that we were going to have to increase the millage by at least one mil, perhaps more, but one was the number we kind of were working towards to provide for our Build a Grant match. So, we are proposing a two-mil increase, one of which we knew all along was gonna be part of what we needed to do. And the other thing that we have in our back pocket to allow us to balance the budget, to give us some flexibility when we go through the year, is to look at restructuring some of our debt, and that's a cash flow issue that allows us to essentially push principal payments back a year. It will cost us more in the long run, but it allows us not to have to increase millage as much in the short term, or make a ton of cuts to the budget in the short term. We think that people don't think too much about, and I appreciate Mr. Miller coming tonight, speaking up, and also making some suggestions about things we might possibly do, but what people don't frequently realize is that 60% of our budget, of our general fund budget, is personnel. There's people that you see when you interact with the city, police, fire, courts, bus, the city clerk's office, 60% of our budget is personnel. Over 20% of our budget is contractually obligated, it's debt service, it's our financial audit, it's our city attorney, just a variety of things that we are contractually obligated to do. Then you're down into less than 20% that could be adjusted, and it's just not, it's hard to make cuts there when you're talking about a $1.1 million deficit, which is what we had before we started trying to balance the budget. So, that's where we found ourselves this year. If our revenues improve, we won't have to do the bond restructuring, if next year, the board that puts together that budget takes a look, that can reset the mortgage rate. It happens every year that we take a look at that and make a decision about how we set those. When we had our work session Friday, we did not talk particularly about enterprise funds, we focused so much on tax and millage that we lost track of the enterprise funds, and if you look at the detailed budget they provided us for utilities, electric water, sewer, sanitation, electric water and sewer, their changes are driven primarily by capital projects. The sewage wagon, the electric substation, the water and sewer pipe replacement projects going on throughout the city. Sanitation, their numbers are pretty much the same, with one fairly major difference. I say fairly major, there are people who will be disappointed that we're going to have to suspend our recycling program. We had gone from per side to drop-off recycling, and effective October 1st, this budget was prepared with us completely suspending our recycling program. It's a program that was little used, only about 10% of our customers used it. Costs have gone up year over year. This year, we were expecting that we would lose about $40,000 on the drop-off project. If we did it right, we would lose considerably more than that, but that's the biggest change in the sanitation department's budget, and from there, you just get down into a little bitty fund, the cuts of the way the city accounts for its money, none of which much of us ever noticed, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Sishtro. Since we're down to that end of the table, Alderman Carver, anything you'd like to say, comment as it relates to this? We'll be taking this up again next time, but anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'm just, first of all, thank you. If you're done, Alderman Sishtro.
Yeah, I mean, just, uh, first of all, thank you. If you don't, Alderman Sistrunk, I mean, I'm gonna always lean toward, uh, possibly not increasing taxes. So since the work session Friday had a lot of individuals calling, uh, being conservative in nature to understand how I feel. Typically, I'm more fans of like the R base budget and being more fluid and it's just a fluid situation. Being, I understand what you're saying, but being comfortable, we can get together our department heads every month and, um, and adjust and readjust. Uh, being in the middle of a global pandemic, I don't think I have the heart and nerve to look at people in the face. I've got a, a lot of widows that I see on a daily basis, and a lot of people on fixed income, and they're having a fear of the county supervisor possibly having a tax increase, uh, water rate restructuring, and a city mill increase. So I'm honest, just today, Alderman Little and I had conversations about uh, always looking for ways to, uh, trick, you know, be conservative with our budget and trick taxpayer dollars like you would. I'm a surprised business. When you don't have enough, you've gotta cut revenues or cut expenses somewhere to maybe possibly closing, I don't know if that conversation's ended, maybe closing a fire station if it doesn't affect our fire rating. Um, that's something I wasn't a part of that discussion, but I'm interested to discuss that. Um, body cameras, you know, something we can push on to make the board, uh, didn't we have, I was thinking we had a surplus last year, and y'all raised taxes anyway for like the cameras, things like that, and you could cut some, cutting back on camera programs. I, I've heard they're not actively moving through. Um, things, by chance, for me, it's not a necessity this year. Something that, uh, politically, I'm pretty surprised y'all were doing this like before an election year. I thought that was a conversation last year. Taxes aren't typically increased the year before an election. Um, I, I just don't, I don't buy that we can't, you know, cut expenses somewhere. I think we can go department by department. If we ask every department to cut, you know, roughly fifty thousand, we'll get more than what they have. The fire department's a, uh, solution. That's, that's a viable solution. I'm for that. It's, uh, it's just gonna be a hard time, I think, if anybody on this board, and we run into office again, and go door to door next year, and I heard today, and someone is thirty-one percent increase in, in, uh, taxes on the last four years. I'm just going, I, I'm gonna ask you that. That's the truth. Stay with thirty to thirty-one percent.
Um, that sounds awfully high for just this board. Um, yeah, I don't, not.
Seventeen point.
Things like, for this board, you know, we're gonna talk about, I mean, I've just got about eleven things here that, uh, you know, you passing a buck on to the citizens, and also next year, the sign ordinance will take effect about a month before the election. That's not gonna be.
You know, postponed, remember?
That's.
You postponed it a year, remember?
It's not coming in May of 2021? When was that?
Twenty-two, May of 2022.
That's something that each business on this understanding, which comes with pipelines, they're gonna have to reduce their sign hikes, and that's gonna be my best, that's my five to ten thousand dollars, depending on more, depending on the business, but, um, it's a lot to take on, and it's, and in the middle of a global pandemic, it's a lot. I mean, I think it's our job as elected officials to, uh, to be conservative during these times, and I know y'all probably know a lot of people on fixed income that don't have the luxury that we all have on this board, and, uh, people are hurting. I mean, I hear it every day. I have to, I, I hear it every day, and I enjoy those conversations, but you know, we need to have a lot of late nights and figure out a way to do this with a tax increase, and definitely, uh, in favor of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk, you do.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to say that mid-year, when, when we, um, first learned of the pandemic, and we were expecting our sales tax numbers to, to drop significantly, we did meet with each of the department heads. And we came up with a program where we were, um, furloughing employees, suspending, um, work around the city. I, I, I don't think that that is something we want to do long term. It, it, in the long term, it just puts us further and further behind. So if you are talking about, um, balancing the budget with, 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 um, cutting expenditures, then I think you do have to look at something like closing a fire station for a year. Firing people, not furloughing them, firing people, costing them their health insurance. Um, that's, that's the simplest way. That would save you probably seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. The fire department's budget is about five million. And so, um, assuming that a fair bit of that is, um, gonna be fixed cost, there's probably four point two to four point five million that is, um, spent amongst the various stations. So, so if you should go that direction, we can absolutely talk about going that direction. That is, um, draconian. I, I, I think that it might not immediately impact our fire rating, but it would long term if it, if it lasted very long. I would say this about that. Um, if we close a fire station, putting it back in in the next year's budget, y'all know how it is. It just takes a long time to get those things built back into a budget. Um, as far as the police department's body cameras, that, they are at the point right now that they're barely functional, I believe, with an assessment of how they, how they are. Um, the technology is very old. Um, they're, they're having to, to repair things to just, if, if you remember when we were in the old city hall building and our IC department was held together with, um, baling wire and twine, with masks, you know, duct tape, I mean, it, it was a disaster. And to catch up is, is expensive, and it's what happens when you don't maintain an investment in the people and your services. Um, so, so I'm absolutely willing to talk about cutting expenses. I do think it's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars from the police and fifty thousand dollars from another department. I think you are talking about something like completely eliminating something.
Thank you. Ald, Alderman?
Um, as I was speaking earlier to Alderman Sistrunk, um, it's interesting, five months ago, we were sitting here in early spring, thinking everything's going wonderful, and we're sitting in a good position, getting ready for baseball, was cranking up, and, uh, never really got started there, and then, uh, all the spring events in the city got canceled, and students went home, and it's just gone downhill from there. We're fortunate that our tax revenues have not been down more, without question, uh, which is surprising, and I haven't figured out exactly. I don't know anyone that has it, why that hasn't happened, but, uh, with everyone going home, um, we don't know what's going to happen in the next few months. We hope the students are able to stay here. Uh, we hope we have football, we hope we have fans in the stands, but there's a lot of uncertainty there. We don't know. Um, I also agree that I think it's a bad time to increase taxes. We've had it the last three years. Uh, this will be the third year in a row we've had tax, tax increases as far as the mileage goes. Um, I'm just wanting to, should we shake the trees again to see if there's any other options as far as, you know, before we go to the well and ask for more money uh, from our citizens, because I, I believe, you know, we've got some businesses that are probably on the bubble and doing all they can to, to stay open and, and hopeful that they'll survive the fall. And, um, I'm just concerned that this may push some, some of the small, independently owned businesses over the edge. Um, and I'm open to, to look at any other options we've got. Uh, I think we just need to maybe look a little harder. It's just, it's easy to go to the well, but it's, it's, I've gotten several calls, Alderman Carver said, uh, over the weekend, and, and, and people have come to see me and visited about it, and, um, we're gonna need to look and see if there's any other options, if there are any out there.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, I certainly, uh, appreciate the, the work that's been done on the budget, uh, in preparation for this year, and knowing that we have a $12 million grant that's not free money for MLK, that the, the long-term uh, economic recovery on that is, is very, uh, viable for the city, but we have to match that, uh, and that's, that's new money uh, that has to be matched, and so that part's under- understandable. I, I agree with Alderman Carver and Little that, uh, it's certainly not a good year to, to raise people's taxes um, due to the pandemic and other things. Um, but, but I've yet to find when there is a good year to raise people's taxes. Uh, I, for one, there, there may be, I, I'm willing to, to look, uh, to see where else might be, be cut, but that means people have to actually look and make some recommendations on what, what they're willing to cut, and go tell your constituents that you're willing to, to eliminate, uh, a new fire station where we've been battling for the last twelve years to get that one operational, and now we're going to eliminate it. Uh, I believe the police do an excellent job in, in our city. There's talk all over the nation about defunding the police. Um, I certainly don't think that's the, the tact that I'm interested in taking. I'm interested in giving them the tools necessary to protect them and the public, and ultimately the city. And the body cameras, along with training, are a, an extremely valuable tool to make sure that that happens. And that technology is not inexpensive, um, and all the men and women that, that wear that badge, they, they deserve the, the technology to make sure uh, that, that they're held accountable, um, and that they're protecting the city in doing so. Um, I'm, I think the, the reality is, is, uh, if we don't have a tax increase, you're going to have to seriously cut into the bone, and that's going to be people. It's not going to be furloughing people for a month or two months. It's not going to be, uh, getting rid of just a few workers in each department. Um, it is going to be much more drastic than that. And I'm willing to, to, to look at what those scenarios are, um, but I think people need to come to the table with a, a recommended plan for how, how much money they're planning to do and what those are, and at that point, it'll be evaluated. Uh, but until that time, I'm not sure what tho- what those answers are. I've looked through the, the budget, um, and coming up with the, the $1.1 million shortfall, um, is, is fairly significant. And so I, I'm willing to, to discuss and, uh, have comments on what we're, what we wanna do, but I think there needs to be some alternative recommendations actually put forth that can, can be discussed in a way where they're, they're, they're valid and they're a legitimate option to consider. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to make a few comments, um, and one I'm specific to Mr. Miller's, um, statement, um, we've had an in- the increase in sales tax, revenue, sales, which, uh, retail sales, sales tax has been positively affected this year and, and was level a slightly higher than last year because of the injection of $600 per week stimulus from the federal government. Now, if that goes away, if that amount is reduced or something, that's going to affect retail sales, and that's gonna affect sales tax rate. Um, so that's something we need to think about, and we've enjoyed that throughout the summer. We've not seen the drop off in, um, in Starkville in sales tax since about May, I guess, May. But, uh, right now Congress is tagging on, you know, commerce, if they're gonna, if they up or renew the, the unformed stimulus money weekly, our money, and how much that's gonna be, if that affects us, um, we're going to be affected if, I understand that college is gonna play football this year, if they are lending a number of, or no people in the stands, and people don't come to football weekends, that's going to adversely materially affect our, our, um, our revenue from, 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 from all the activities on weekends and stuff. That's gonna affect sales tax. It's gonna affect sales tax in these special classes we have. Three days, hot, hot tax, it's gonna affect general sales tax. I'm getting back, and I'll mention this also. Getting the University of North Carolina shut their campus down a couple days ago, and it's gone off to, 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 um, classes. There's nothing different in Chapel Hill, North Carolina, than from Austin, Mississippi, or, or, you know, Alden, Alabama, or Starkville, Mississippi, that, that we couldn't be affected by that also. Um, next thing I would mention is because we're a college town, where people come and throw a lot of money at us, right, because of activities associated with the sports and activities around Mississippi State. Our mileage rate here, with all the officials low, it's, it's the lowest in the state average. We've been able to keep it low. Average statewide, you can look at, you can look it up in, in the average, uh, mileage rate from municipal to state Mississippi is around thirty-five, thirty-six mil. Right now, we're at twenty-eight point what?
One three.
Twenty-eight point one three mil. So we're, we're substantially below the state average on mileage rate right now. That, that works fine as long as you've got the, that extra injection stink, you know, coming from, from being a college town. When that goes away, then you got to operate like a regular town, like Grenada, Full Death, or Dixburg, or Law, Newton, or Forest, or any other town in the state that has to drop it, you know, with the budget. Um, what would be the impact of Alderman Sistrunk of a $150,000 house, uh, in addition to two mils?
Probably what? Thirty, thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars, right. Hundred fifty thousand times, you, you, uh, whole state rate ten percent to sell it fifteen, fifteen percent times, oh, thirty, that'd be thirty dollars a year. Okay. Uh, on thirty dollars, thirty dollars, but I mean, that's, that's the impact of a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, uh, um, if it's your primary dwelling on this two mil tax increase. Um, next thing I would bring up, Starkville just lowered our fire insurance work, it's worked our hands off by chief and fire department the last four, five, six years to, to prepare for, and get to the point where we ask Mississippi State ready to overcome, evaluate our city, uh, to lower our fire flash rating from class four to class three. That is puts Starkville in an elite class of fire departments and cities, in state of Mississippi anyway, with respect to our, our fire insurance rating. Um, two things to do, I, I, three things to do. You're safe. We had, one of the big, one, one of the big things we did to get your class three rating was, after twelve years of owning a station out here on Gary Road, we finally fully staffed it. We put in two or three firemen to staff the station. Cities often have fire stations, uh, and, and, they have, they have full-time paid staff, fire departments, that staff in their station. We need to continue to staff that, that fire, that fire department. Second of all, Alderman Little mentioned last week, it'll vary from house to house and business to business, but when you drop a improvement of a fire protection flash rating, like going from four to three, to three to two, to five, four, there are some savings on fire insurance for every, every building in, in a city. Some, some, some companies, State Farm, some of them may not have any uh, decrease at all, but there are a lot of companies that use the rating bureau and fire protection flash ratings that really lower the fire insurance, uh, uh, cost on, on your, on your files, if it's your house, your business, or whatever. Um, let's talk about the water sewer lines, and, and, uh, this, this goes to the, the enterprise fund stuff, but but we've got eighty, we got, we got water lines starting with old and failing. Even if, if, if you don't believe that, go somewhere else in the state and drive around and look at that. It's just, it's, you could look at the streets, and you don't see toilet streets. You know that, that what's on the street is, is, is not, is not failing, and that, there's, there's reasons for that, but, you know, one of the things in a college town is you have a lot of people moving in and out, a lot of new construction, a lot of water taps. Um, I, add that to eighty, one hundred year old water lines in, in the, the old parts of town. This is the water system, being the original water system. She started probably from nineteen hundred, nineteen twenty. So it's one hundred, the, the original old water lines in the main part of town are one hundred plus years old. As you move out into central older parts of our neighborhood and our city, you still have water lines seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, ninety years old. They're failing. They're past golden. The underground, we don't think about it, maybe a break or something, but those, that, that ailing, not aging, but that aging, failing infrastructure is not going to go. It's gonna get more extensive by the year. And our, our water sewer department, public work department's trying to set us up to where we'll have money to go in and start cap, on a regular basis, doing capital improvements to start replacing old, aging water sewer lines. That's just good government. Um, excuse anything else I had. Um, I'm, I'm not for raising taxes, raising taxes, say, but we're going to operate our government in a way that I think the constituents expect us to, our fire, and, and particularly our general fund with this, with this new, uh, rating free. Our, our fire department, police department, general government services, streets, things like that are all paid for out of the general fund budget, and gently that's paid, that's funded primarily with sales tax and the other one tax. Um, with the drop off and the sales tax that I think is going to, is going to happen, we, we may see some federal stimulus pop it up some more for a while, but we're gonna see that sales tax level start to drop off as it does. If we don't have, if we don't, if we don't, have not accounted for that, and like Alderman Sistrunk said, we get one chance if it starts to to, 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 to put in place the revenue, that we're gonna have to operate monthly this year. If we don't do that, we're gonna, we could find a citizen in a, in a situation where it's really short. And then, because so much of our budget is personnel and stuff, when you start cutting, you're cutting people in. You're going to encourage personnel and stuff. So, um, this is not anything that we want to do, but, but I know that people look at our budget, we've all started to look at it, you know, look at it, uh, that, uh, what we propose to, really, because it's not, it's not frivolous. We, it's something propose to the league is not, is not frivolous, we, it's something that, you know, we've got to have, operate on, to maintain our growth and our sources of things like what, what we think people say. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alvin Beatty. I'm Stephen Perkins.
Well, Mayor, I think I'm, I'm compelled to make a few comments in light of what's been said this evening. Let me start off by saying, Mayor, and thank you very much for the recognition, I would like to say initially, Mayor, that I have a very solid and conservative record of voting against tax increases. However, given the totality of the, uh, facts and circumstances and the substantial evidence that is before us tonight, I am, um, compelled, uh, to support, uh, this, um, proposed tax increase. Um, I do it very reluctantly, but it is warranted, and this is why it is, in my opinion, that is warranted. Let me say before I go into the explanation, and of course, I've been on this board for over, uh, twenty-seven years, and, and I have very solidly, um, voted against, uh, tax increases. About a couple of instances that I've done, I can recall back in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, when we added a mill for the annex roads, uh, after the Massana station, and I supported the tax increase for the, uh, the police station at the current location. And this is, um, the substantial evidence that exists, in my opinion, Mayor. Um, we have a, um, the bill grant, uh, that we have, as a city, been working on for a very extended time, trying to get the needed, uh, federal funds to substantially improve Highway one eighty-two in our city, and if that improvement, uh, is allowed, it will substantially enhance the aesthetics and the economic development, and that is extremely important in our city. And in order to do that, we are required as a city to provide a twenty percent match, which translates, based on my information, to thirty million dollars. And realistically, Mayor, and my honorable colleagues, the three million dollars is not laying there in our general funds for us to utilize as a match. So the question becomes, where do we get the three million dollars from? And, and this grant is so important, after, um, uh, enormous amount of, of efforts and labor that have, uh, been, uh, put forth to be able to get this grant, uh, we, uh, certainly cannot allow this grant to slip away from us. So it should be undisputed, um, Mayor, that we certainly going to have to, um, increase the taxes because we got to have the matching money. And then the, um, the second factor of the, uh, substantial evidence, in my opinion, why this, um, this tax, uh, mileage increase is warranted, is that, as I understand, uh, Mayor and Honorable Budget Chair, and certainly I'm not no scholar like the two of you are in this field, I'm, I'm, but let me say it, and as best as Vice Mayor can say it, but, uh, as I understand, from January of twenty twenty through June of twenty twenty, our sales tax revenue, the seven percent, together with the food and beverage tax, the hotel tax, the restaurant tax, we are at least about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars more or, or less in collections for the first six months of this year in comparison to the same time for last year. And as it has been previously stated, we do not know what the next six months is going to hold. We all are well, uh, intellectually aware that this pandemic that we're in, this health crisis we're in, this economic crisis we're in, we may be, have a greater shortfall with our revenue for the remaining six months. So I understand that we, uh, uh, rely upon this sales tax, which constitutes, in my, based on my, uh, information, thirty-four percent of our city revenue, thirty-four percent. So if we continue to lose that revenue, as we have done the first six months, we will have lost more than amount that is equal to a mill of tax. We have to understand the fact so we can make a very intellectual decision. Certainly, I'm not one to vote for, uh, for a tax increase, but in this instance, I am. As I understand, Honorable Mayor, uh, a one-mill tax, uh, mileage equals to two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We have almost reached that loss of revenue for the first six months. No, just because the ballgames have been scheduled for Mississippi State, uh, which is, um, a great, uh, relies upon our city for revenue for the, for the fall, that does not mean that the games are going to be held. This pandemic dictates our way of life every day. The governor is constantly holding news conferences, he's constantly having to make decisions, and we're constantly having to make decisions, so we cannot count that money until we get it in our hands and put it in the bank. So, uh, it is my opinion that these two factors alone is enough substantial evidence, in my opinion, that warrants a proposed tax increase. Yes, as the Budget Chair said, you know, you can go and look back at this, you can look at the fire station. No, we're not going to cut in revenue, I'm not going to vote to cut in revenue for it, and we worked too hard to get Fire Station Number Five funded. That fire station is, just for a little history lesson here, uh, I'm going to be through in a few minutes, Mayor, but the little history lesson is that grant was awarded at the end of the mayor's first involvement with the city during the two thousand five, two thousand and nine term. That's when the grant was approved for the lock and key job to Fire Station Number Five. And you just know in this term here, more than a decade later, we're just fully funding it, no, we're not going to cut that. That's not realistic. That is not realistic to cut. So that, you know, I, I'm not aware of anything we can cut it, no, and we got to fund the police department. There's no ifs, there's no ands, there's no buts about it. They got to have the equip, yes, they got to have a body cam, they got to have a video cam. If we want them to properly serve, particularly, which they're going to have to, they, they must do, they shall, that we, it takes money to do that. It takes the money to do it. So we can, I'm asking the assistants to, to, to do that, to look at the budget, but it's going to come back to the same thing. We do not have the money for the match, we got to fund the police department for the, as she mentioned, for the body cam, we, that is a mandate. We got to have the money, uh, to operate our city, and we're almost a mill short in tax. Where do you get the money from? The money's not in the bank. No, we don't want to, uh, raise taxes. I don't want to vote for it because there are people that, um, that are low income, on fixed income, that's, um, you know, that are struggling, but at the same time, that's why we are in this position to make this tough decision. And, 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 and I'm going to say this, I'm about to yield, and then the next item, so I don't have to speak to that then, I talked about the, the, um, water and sewer rates in a very brief way. You know, we got to have money for capital improvements. We just spent in excess of a million dollars in pleasant acres, we're spending, oh, in, in Ward Four, we just spent, we're about to spend over a million dollars in Ward One. We're coming to Ward Six, based on prime board approval, spent a million dollars there, and there are more areas we got to go through, all throughout the city and all wards. So where are you going to get the money from? The money got to come from somewhere, and as Mr. Kemp said, the twenty eighteen, the twenty eighteen, uh, rate increase just did not fund, or provide enough funding for all the capital improvements. We need the seven point five million dollars annually. So that, that is going only, you know, two to five dollars, so if you want this, get rid of aging infrastructure, it's going to take the money. So I know it's kind of hard to hear me talking about this, but it, but I've studied this, I've done my homework on it, it's the right thing to do. So I'm going to vote for it, uh, on, on Tuesday, September one, twenty twenty, I'm going to vote for this mileage increase for the reason I have articulated, and, and, uh, in, uh, in just in a few minutes, I'm going to vote for this, um, this water and sewer increase, uh, that's on, for the reason I just stated. So I just wanted to take this term, not unnecessarily, but just to, you know, as, uh, as the Vice Mayor, and, and so I can articulate this to the record, because this is a very vital matter, a very serious matter, and Mayor, and for all these reasons, I'm going to support both of these matters. I didn't mean to take so much time, but it was necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and it was, uh, greatly appreciated, and you laid out the facts, um, very, very, um, succinct, and I appreciate that, very, very nicely done.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. Uh, I, I kind of like to listen to the board, you know, I don't vote for no tax increase, but I'm just wondering where the funding coming from, and we don't, if something, where are the funds coming from? And we're going to give a twelve point six million dollar bill grant away just because we don't want to come up with three million dollars, something that we've been trying to do for years and years and years to revitalize one eighty-two in Malibu, Kingston, we've been trying to do it for years. I know for my twelve years, we've been trying to do that. So if we don't come with that fund, that's some definite, definite grant we're going to give back to the government. And, and, and we can see all around, all around the world, where, where body cams are so important now. I, I, I know we, the city staff, they send their lawsuits in because we don't have a body cam, because we don't have the, the equipment to do it, the fire, the police to do the proper job that they need to be doing. So if we go back to the board, where are we going to pull all these funds from? That's not, where are they coming from to, to support this, that we need to, for us to continue to finish this year, and they look bad, and we, we, we finish this year, and then, and then we don't be back after the next board, we got another board in bad condition, so where are they going to come from with the funding? They might not have, they might not have the knowledge and the expertise that we have to make this and put this in proper, proper planning. So I, I'm just wondering where it's coming from. I hate to give this bill back, back, back to the government, and all we got to do is come up with three points and fund it, and I definitely don't want to be sued simply because we don't have a body cam. So those are, those are two most important things that we should be looking at as a board. Why are we going to do this, or where the money coming from? Only way I see it, and you know, I don't like to vote for no, for no tax increase, you know, you know, I don't like to do it, I don't, but I don't see no inflation when we get the funds, no.
All right, thank you, Alvin Don. Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to take a couple of seconds myself, and, and I'll try not to be too redundant, but I, I think it, it needs to be said, it needs to be highlighted or emphasized, uh, some of the things that everyone has said, uh, in particular, um, one of the things we're finding ourselves doing is waiting to see what's going to happen each and every day. Uh, we are dependent on whether or not the university stays in session, and we could easily have reached the same, um, result that happened in North Carolina. We certainly hope not, and we hope that our students are working with us to, um, adhere to the mask and the social distancing, though we know certainly that they do not always do that, um, but we are hopeful that, uh, we can make it through this semester, but even if we are, uh, and even if we have football games, that does not translate to people in town, which is what matters for us as it relates to our food and beverage, our hotel, and our sales tax. So one does not necessarily translate into the other, even though we might very well enjoy lots of football, which I'm truly looking forward to. Um, the other piece of that is that, uh, our, our ability to rely on sales tax is, I think, one of our weak points that we have learned from this, and I tried to articulate that in a, in an op ed piece I did that, that the Start with a New brand on Sunday, we have been living on sales tax in ways that other communities do not, as Alvin Beatty stated. And it may be, at this point in time, that it is appropriate for us to look at how that balances out, because this may not be the only, um, critical circumstance under which that sales tax goes away. I certainly hope it is, but we do not have any idea going forward whether, uh, there may be more, uh, or less, uh, in-person classes, there may be more people staying home than there ever have been before, that may be a trend that continues, and how that's going to translate to us is yet to be seen. The fact that we are not going to have any Christmas shopping in town because the kids are going to leave at Thanksgiving is going to be impactful to our local stores, particularly our, our small stores, so that is going to be one of the issues that we're looking at from the sales tax standpoint. Um, I do, I absolutely do not think we should, uh, jeopardize our fire rating because we did just get it. I think it's appropriate that we keep our fire stations staffed now that we have them staffed. Um, I think cutting back, um, and that would be cutting personnel because you're looking at doing it for a year, you're not furloughing, you're laying people off. And, uh, I am not, I'm not prepared to be supportive of that. Uh, the police cameras and the, both security and body cameras are adhering to our safety in our community. As we well know, we do not have the numbers of police necessarily that we might have, depending on what kind of, um, numbers you, you use to support that, two and a half police officers per ten thousand or whatever it is, I, I don't know what that formula is, but, um, the reality is we have never done that when we've been very fortunate. We have an incre- incredibly safe town. We have, uh, um, a police department that is accredited to, to their credit and to ours in being supportive of the efforts it takes to do that. Those body cameras are critical to their success and to our success with that. The security cameras have helped them watch what's going on around town in ways that allow us to be proactive, um, and know areas that are, uh, potential problems and respond to them quickly. Um, so from my perspective, those cameras and those body cameras keep us from having to man or staff up in ways that other communities do so. Uh, communities that are our same size have ten and sixteen more police officers than we do, and I think in large part it's because we have been incredibly, um, dedicated to the safety of our community through those security cameras and through those body cameras, and through training and accreditation. Um, as it relates to the two mils, uh, that is only half of what we need. And so my hope is that, um, Mr. Miller is right, that perhaps our sales tax will be rebounding, but it would have to rebound significantly for that to be covered, um, other than by the two mils. Uh, so hopefully, if it does rebound, the two mils will do what we need it to do. If it does not, we will be looking at restructuring our debt, which is quite clearly pu- pushing our, um, obligations out a couple of years, which costs us in the long run, but gives us a cash flow that allows us to function during this upcoming year or two, if indeed the sales tax is reduced significantly and things start to recover. We need a vaccination, va- vaccination or vaccine, or we need, um, a treatment, neither of which right now are necessarily on the horizon. We certainly hope they are, but I, I'm not, I'm breath on that. Um, the bill grant clearly was something we obligated ourselves for, and to turn a bill grant back means we will never, ever in our lifetime see another one. The feds will, the federal government will not look at us favorably for any additional federal fund if we turn a grant back. So, um, that is not an option in, in my opinion. And last but not least, I have never, I have never, um, made a decision, and, and I don't, obviously, I don't vote except in the case of the tie, but I have never supported anything or made a decision based on whether or not I'm going to get reelected. I have said long and, and loud that, as far as I'm concerned, I did not get elected to get reelected. I got elected to get done what I think is right during the term while I'm here. So that bears not at all in my support of this two-mil increase, which, by the way, none of us like to do. I don't care who we are, and I don't care what it is we're trying to do, nobody wants to raise taxes. And I will guarantee you, I will match my tax bill with anybody as to what I have to pay when we raise this mileage by two mils. Um, so it is something that I am very supportive of, but only because I think we have set our, our foot on a path that is incredibly, um, aggressive and progressive for the city, and I want us to keep going in that direction, the bill grant being one of those, infrastructure being another one, the security and safety from our police department and our fire department being incredibly significant, keeping our roads paved, all those things come out of, uh, the general fund, and it is incredibly important to me that we continue down that path. So I have said my piece. We will have another opportunity to discuss this on September the first, and again, at our work session, uh, on the twenty-eighth of August. I see your hand, Alvin Carver, you wish to say something?
Yeah, I'm coming.
Sure, okay.
The flip side of all of that, there is no time sensitivity, and, and, you know, my opinion is just, is, is a lot of people are hurting, and there's a lot of people that aren't, including those other people on this board, and they may be counting every dollar, and that's the people that I hear from, um, day to day. Secondly, yes, you can reject the bill, uh, bill grant fund for one eighty-two, there are secondary opinions to everything. Also, you can, uh, look away through closing the fire station, you can have a lot of late night budgets made, and we go line item by line item, and that's not a, you know, just enormous amount of money that we can't come up and cut. I mean, a half a million dollars in our budget is very doable, so I mean, yeah.
No, no, what I was going to say is you're looking at one point one million dollars to get it balanced.
The debt restructuring will take some of that, right?
The debt restructuring could take some of that, but, but if you're opposed to raising taxes, then you ought to be opposed to debt restructuring because it is kicking the can-
then you ought to be opposed to debt restructuring because it is kicking the can down.
I'm looking at two mil tax increase, five hundred and forty thousand. And those are the things, there's options that we can, you know, the elected officials, we can do a big diligence, and I'm fine, I go on my line, and I'm fine with looking at body cams, I'm fine with utility issues, things that, you know, it's hard. We talked about reneges, taking kind of a same type situation that the nature's had, and, you know, it's, it's, if pipes are sixty, seventy, eighty percent, eighty years old, I've heard it every time, I mean, for lack of a better term, to take the past bucks to the next board, but it's one of those, tighten first strings down, get to a pandemic, and then, you know, pipe waiting a year as far as not having tax breaks is an option. It's always an option not to have tax breaks. Obviously, the votes are there. I've heard comments on the other side of the board table I've never heard in eleven years. So, you know, I agree when I say the votes are there. I feel about it. I just, I think you're going to have to look a lot of people in the face. You know, and the only reason I said the comments about being elected is that was said by a certain board members last year, that taxes typically aren't raised the year before an election. That's the first time I heard that said. So ironically, because the situation never ended, a year later we're doing that as a board. But, but yeah, you should never, never should do that before an election. It's, I mean, any basic government one-on-one class would tell you that that's typically not done the year before an election. So from what I remember from my education. But it's going to be done this year. Get ready for it. And, yeah, we can, we can reject the bill grant. That's fine with me. I mean, if that's something that you get to understand and see what's going to happen over the next five, six, seven months, baseball season, that's something we can do as a board. That's always an option, is to not raise taxes. So I think sometimes this board just takes the easy way out and raises taxes and doesn't want to shut departments and furlough employees, and, you know, it's tough. It's a decision. But saying that, there's been previous discussions across this board. I wasn't involved in all of them, so some of this is new to me against another, a year before. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Beatty. Pairing and replacing, and they all, you know, and they maybe not, you know, the money that they're seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five, so a lot of cost, north central, central start, north start, water, sewer line replacement. And it's a comment on that, on this board, to do what's responsible, not necessarily was popular, but what's responsible in starting and raising necessary money, start to have, not piece media, not, not put the Band-Aids on, but do water and sewer line replacement in our city. It's not going away. I don't want to keep it down, it's going down the road to some future board, when it's more expensive, if that, you know, down the road to do. Sewers, if you can smell raw sewers in drains, ditches, and the city's water, you can smell this time of year, nobody saw, water and sewer department and public department, all they do is stretch around as far as they stretch it, and make, make the end meeting, and make to do everything they do. But when you can smell sewers, raw sewers, in drains, ditches, and water, sewer line needs to be replaced. And they've been passing time needing to be replaced. What is it? American Society of Civil Engineers, put out a report every four years, four cars, and I forgot what they said, but they gave Mississippi a grade of water and sewer of D plus or C minus, something like that. And there were a lot of other states that were saying, but what they basically saying were, if the United States cities, municipal, city government, water systems, and I said, we're sitting on a ticking time bomb. This stuff is, a lot of it, way past it's used a lot, crumbling. That problem is not going away, and I don't want to keep it down the road to somebody else to have to pay for. Because I don't want to do it responsibly. We need to get water and sewer line replacement, not piece media, but I mean, replacing water and sewer infrastructure in the city. And other cities need to do it too. This something can come on us as an elected board to make tough decisions. Sometimes a, a, a rate increase, a rate adjustment is needed to be able to go in and start to do that for our citizens, for our city. Mayor, you.
Thank you. All right. Alderman Siskel.
And I want to add one, one thing to what's been said tonight. The implication is that raising taxes is the easy way out. If raising taxes was the easy way out, we wouldn't have had the issues that we had last year with getting a budget passed, and we wouldn't be having the discussions that we're having this year in getting a budget passed. It is the responsible thing to do.
All right.
Where, where are we just having raw issues? I think we need to get a.
Well, I think we've got water rates that we're going to take up here in a minute, and I'll, and that'll give Alderman Beatty a chance to say it. Let me go ahead and get out of this particular discussion. We'll be taking it up again.
They just threw that in the morning. That's the first I heard about. Do you have an address?
No, no, I, let's, let's just, let's just put it in the context of that. There's sewer line rates that happen all, I've lived here fifteen years, and you can go with inflation in my part of town and drains, base, of course, yeah. Not in your part of town, because your part of town's built in the city, you said. My town part of town was built in nineteen twenties and thirties and forties. There's a lot of difference, Alderman Carter, on that. Now, those water, those sewer systems over there, I tell you, they're old and grubby. We've got caustic clay in this part of the country that eats on water and sewer pipes, and those are not just, those are not isolated rates that happen. You know, this, this, this is general failure of our water, of our sewer system. And we just, we need to, we need to come to terms with that and realize if we've got something, we need to go, and it's going to take some money. We're not, nobody's going to like what it's going to cost to pay for all this stuff, but it's time for municipal officials, elected officials to get in, roll sleeves up, come to terms with this stuff, and start to get it replaced.
Thank you. All right. I have one item to read, just as a matter of having a hearing for the next budget, next budget meeting, so let me read that, and then we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which will be filed to discuss that further. Board will have an additional public hearing on the budget and tax levy on September the first, 2020, during its regular meeting at 5:30 PM at City Hall, at which time the budget and tax levy for the upcoming year shall be adopted. The hearing shall also be noticed pursuant to Mississippi Code, Section twenty-seven dash thirty-nine dash two oh three, sub two. So having said that, we have had our first public hearing, and we will now move to the consideration of the water and sewer rate adjustment, which, aside from the claim stock, is the only remaining item we have on the, on agenda for open session. Consideration of the water and sewer rate adjustment effective October one, 2020, provide funding needed for planned capital infrastructure improvement. Mr. Kemp is here to provide any further discussion for those who wish to, Mr. Kemp, is there anything, would you come up, please, sir? Would you like to give us a brief overview of what it is that the proposal is vis a vis what we have right now? And I think the, the board members were, everyone was there, or everyone has been made aware of what was provided at the work session, so just do a quick recap and let the board discuss.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. As we've discussed earlier, this is a continuation of the discussion we had about two years ago, when the board took an initiative to be more proactive and deal with aged infrastructure throughout the city. We have several neighborhoods that were clearly, based under reports and with the work that we were doing, kind of prioritize that. And we started closing acres, we've moved the Greco's, Roland Hills, I put our gardens, there's places throughout the city, and it's something that's a large percentage in the city that have served the city well, but it's time to be replaced. And when that more proactive becomes, then it's just going to go downhill. We've proposed about two years ago in the rate proposal, it was assisted, we assisted Mississippi State Health to develop a plan, and I think it's the Vice Mayor indicated that through the last ten years, we've been monitoring that rate structure that was put in place, and it did not generate the numbers that we needed to continue the capital projects moving forward. So the ninth proposal was that we change or make that adjustment so that we would do a total system revenue of close to seven point five and eight dollars. That's what will be coming from our water and sewer rate structure. That allows us a million, a million and a half dollars that could be used for capital improvement over the years coming forward. As we look at our five-year plan going forward regarding now five over twenty thousand dollars worth of capital improvement projects, we feel are very important for the city, not only existing customers, but also the future customers as well. The rates might actually reflect putting fifty cents on these with base rates on the floor rate process, carbon under four dollars, it would go to four. The variable rate would go to four dollars and fifteen cents from three twenty-five. Majority of our customers inside the city serve in this, on this enterprise, fits into the last five thousand gallons. So we would anticipate somewhere around maybe five dollars per month of the new tax on that. Again, I think it sets a status quo, a plan intention two, two years ago, and keeps us on that path so that we can continue these capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. One of the things that I think is worth noting is that prior to our two thousand and eighteen study, we had never done that before. That was new for us. And so I think that's our first opportunity to look at it on a very professional basis, to determine what we need to do going forward in order to achieve the ends of having the infrastructure replaced, and, and looking forward twenty years or more into where we are, that each subdivision, as it ages, is going to need that infrastructure. So, all right.
Exactly. Excellent point. This was the first start, because prior to that, we did more of a repair type thing, and it was a bit too near tonight, you know. What we see is the long-term benefit, if you start replacing, you save the money that you were doing in just a pure repair, and that goes back to the long range capital. So once we get the ball rolling and keep it going down that direction, there's other benefits that come back to the service for our customers.
And not the least of which is what Alderman Beatty mentioned, in that we're not tearing up our roads on a regular basis, trying to repair things that are beyond their, beyond their age. All right. Well, having said that, we'll start Alderman Vaughn. Anything you wish to ask Mr. Kemp, or anything you wish to say?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nothing additionally, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Beatty.
What will I, what will I, what will I define rate the, the, the other four, five, the five, six times we look at? What, what, if we ran the forty-two dollars, we still would, would put us on, keep us slight, and everything, they're pulling at what?
Keep, that's, we're even with our projections on this new rate, it keeps us below the average of all similar cities, lower than Columbus, for instance. And then if you looked at our water rates on all of our surrounding rural water systems, it's in the margin for city production. Maybe the effects will be lower than all of their.
Alderman Walker.
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Little.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Siskel.
This is not directly related to this. I think this is a worthwhile project, and I don't know where the money comes from short of a rate increase. So, but we got into this two years ago, and you had a plan for which neighborhoods you're going to go to and sequence. Based on some things that Alderman Beatty has said tonight, it might be appropriate as we're going into this to revisit the sequencing of some of those repairs. And I'd, I'd appreciate if he would, maybe at a future board meeting, let us know if, if the plan holds that you had two years ago, or if there are issues that are starting to happen that need to, to maybe move an area like up to the high car and up on the list.
Thank you, Alderman. I, I think what we've tried to do in our plan is we've got areas that we want to go and do all water and sewer and that sort of time. We've also had projects in headwind that throughout the city that, I think our gardens are down there. Alderman Vaughn said something, his intent on those is to make fairly lengthy repairs or modifications, but do it in such a way that it fits into a bigger plan when we get to that point in time. So, but excellent point, and we hope that we've got some, some opportunities we've already got to kind of identify in our plan so that we can actually be more flexible, so that we can shoot up the, make sure we don't have an emergency special or kind of, that is, a lot of.
Thank you. Thank you. And Alderman Carter.
Yeah, my other question, if we were to table this until this time next year, do you have a profit on and a possibility of service? And I think we'd be there any gaps uncovered or anything like that from a capital investment standpoint? If we were to table this for a year, would the operation process still be fluid and smooth, or just going to stop, you know, you know, continuance of operation?
I'd say right now, if we don't continue, then basically the plan gets put on hold.
That could be an option.
I mean, that's the board's decision. I, I think, like we said earlier, we've got a plan in place. We've got to be out there identifying from the last previous one. There's no money to do that now. And so the funds that we would propose now, all of it, kind of pretty much earmarked, but we hope they are going to be available so that we can continue to run those. We've just had a lot of work there. We've got a lot of money going south of this cross, kind of teaching time to last to it. So we would not be able to get the projects we proposed.
And then I got a question back, picture of what happened with, with them, why we don't, all the, those calculations.
Mississippi State, I think that's something we first got through this, we got a lot of drawbacks, but they tried to bring the house and all that. We usually have a benefit, but we do, we need to look at the question, because the kind of management rate structure to where we want to go in capital. And part of that, and it's putting a thousand gallons, is a part of the base charge and factored into. And there are those calculations, I think that's where a big gap was. And as we started seeing revenue immediately after that, like I mentioned, we've been monitoring this throughout, you can see where that gap in the model was. And what we've been doing, working with Mississippi State, and they did a great job, their partners in with us on this, we've actually built a model now that we can, we're comfortable, and it kind of reflects what our system looks like, and it goes back in our festival base and ties to this gap to plan. And so I'd say that's kind of what it was, Alderman, is that early on, it was just, just to meet us on that, and the rates that we had anticipated just did not materialize.
And the other thing is that we changed the formula. We used to have zero for the, we started counting from zero, and we gave the first thousand gallons for free, in essence, except for your base rate. And so that was part of the change that we didn't anticipate.
And you're right, Mayor. What we did, we moved the variable up a little bit. If we looked at fixed costs, it only went a fifty cents, but essentially you gave two dollars and sixty-five cents away to that first group. So you had a huge gap brought off on the front. And with less than five thousand, five thousand gallons is our, most of our customers fit into that smaller category. It was ninety-five a little bit. So I think through the new model, they can address that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. All right. If there's no further discussion, we will, it's time for us to vote. If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name. Oh, I'm sorry. I do need a motion. I apologize. Thank you. I would jump the gun myself, didn't I? I'm sorry. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
A motion for approval from Alderman Siskel. Got a second? Second from Alderman Beatty. All right. Now, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Siskel.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Nay.
All right. By vote of five to two, motion carries. And then we have the only remaining item for open session is our claim socket. Do you have a motion, our motion for, claim socket, do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Further discussion? If you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Alderman Siskel.
Yea.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
May I excuse my, may I change my name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I had you down as a nay, Alderman Vaughn. It's hard to tell through the mask these days. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, that closes out our regular session. If we do, I need a motion for us to go into, a motion to go into closed session from Alderman Vaughn. Got a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Little. Discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins. Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Siskel.
She has stepped out.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
All right. By vote of six, because now that we have a motion to go into, or we have a, we have a, a motion to go into a closed session to determine the need for executive session. So session, so if you would, please clear the room, and we will take that matter up and come back out and make you an.